Jessica, go ahead.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, June 17, 2024. Commissioners Court is meeting in regular open session. Today, we are joined by ASL interpreter Selena Salu, Monserad Viasana, and Nayali Kabral. Commissioner Olgin, would you like to introduce our Pledge of Allegiance person for today?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, everyone. This morning, we will be led in the pledge by my student intern, Kayla Iyoki, who is a student at UTEP.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kayla.
And now, we will receive an invocation by Ms. Estela Onzures, a member of the Esperanza en Cristo Baptist Church.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Good morning and shalom. Let us pray. This is the day the Lord has made. Let us rejoice and be glad in it. Dear Lord, we gratefully thank you, Lord, for it is you who is our God. Be favorable, Lord, towards your people and servants and bless them. Commissioners Court, City Council, our president, our nation, may they let you guide them and give them wisdom. Give them, your servants, a discerning heart to govern your people and distinguish between right and wrong. May the Lord bless you, safeguard you, and be gracious to you, in the name of Jesua, Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Estela. Appreciate your time here. Thank you.
Judge, would you like to make any opening comments before we begin?
Yeah, thank you. I would like to welcome all of you to Commissioners Court. We have Commissioner Stout is online, and Commissioner Court now won't be able to make it this time. But obviously, on behalf of all of us, we thank you for being here, wishing you a tremendous Monday and just a very blessed week. So, thank you for being here. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Item number four is the consent agenda composed of items 4A through 4AC. We would like to request for items 4AA, 4AB, and 4AC be deleted. These items were previously postponed June 3, 2024. They were added back to the agenda of June 10, 2024, and approved at that time. Are there any items members of the court or public would like to pull for discussion?
Do you have any? No? Thank you. Move to approve.
We have a motion by Judge Samaniego, second by Commissioner Leon. The voting is open? I'm sorry, it was a second by Commissioner Olgin.
Thank you.
I'm having difficulties opening my voting, but I vote aye.
Aries.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Stout.
Item five, Resolutions. 5A, approve and adopt a resolution declaring June 19, 2024 as Juneteenth in El Paso County, Texas.
Commissioner Stout?
Yes, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I have the honor of reading this resolution into the record. Just one moment. I need to pull it up here on my computer. All right. So, I think, and I hope that everyone knows that, or what Juneteenth is. If not, you're going to learn from this resolution. It never ceases to amaze me that the great state of Texas seceded not once, but twice to unfortunately keep slavery. First from Mexico, which abolished slavery well before the US, and then from the United States as part of the Confederacy. While this is a celebration of freedom, I can't help but think about how that context shapes our modern times. But we know that knowledge reigns supreme, and we'll keep educating, keep trying to change hearts and minds. And until we stamp out racial prejudice and hate, until we understand that we're all in this together, whether it's the community of El Paso, or the state of Texas, or our country, or, you know, this little blue marble that we live on in space. So, thank you to the Black El Paso Voice and to everyone here who keeps knowledge alive and works to uplift the Black community in El Paso. And in so doing, participates in lifting all of El Paso. So, I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution, and then we're going to hear from our guests. Need to pull up the resolution real quickly. Just give me a moment. Sorry. Well, I'm having trouble pulling it up. Sorry. Give me one more moment. Okay, we got it. Sorry about the wait, y'all. Okay, the resolution states, "Whereas on June 19, 1865, people of Texas first learned that all slaves in the former Confederacy had been freed, two years after President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation to the rebellion states. And whereas nearly 250,000 former slaves in Texas were to be given absolute equality in their personal and property rights following the reading of General Order Number Three, delivered by Union General Gordon Granger and Gallison following the end of the American Civil War. And whereas on January 1, 1980, Juneteenth became an official state holiday in Texas through the efforts of Al Edwards, a Black American state legislator. The successful passage of this bill marked Juneteenth as the first emancipation celebration granted official state recognition. And whereas Juneteenth, also called Freedom Day or Emancipation Day, remains the most popular and widely recognized annual event celebrating the end of slavery in the United States. And whereas Juneteenth stands as a poignant reminder of the atrocities endured by Black Americans, it simultaneously commemorates the formidable challenges and barriers surmounted in the relentless pursuit of full civil rights, voting rights, and social justice, while honoring the monumental achievements and contributions of millions of Black Americans. And whereas local organizations and initiatives such as Juneteenth El Paso, Black El Paso Voice, McCall Neighborhood Center, Oro Temple Nine, Oro Court Number 20, El Paso Holy Royal Arch Mason's Number 90, amplify...
Jessica, go ahead.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, June 17, 2024. Commissioners Court is meeting in regular open session. Today, we are joined by ASL interpreters Selena Salu, Monserad Viasana, and Nayali Cabral. Commissioner Olgin, would you like to introduce our Pledge of Allegiance person for today?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, everyone. This morning, we will be led in the pledge by my student intern, Kayla Iyoki, who is a student at UTEP.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Kayla.
And now, we will receive an invocation by Ms. Estela Onzures, a member of the Esperanza en Cristo Baptist Church.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Morning and shalom. Let us pray. This is the day the Lord has made. Let us rejoice and be glad in it. Dear Lord, we gratefully thank you, Lord, for it is you who is our God. Be favorable, Lord, towards your people and servants and bless them. Commissioners Court, City Council, our president, our nation, may they let you guide them and give them wisdom. Give them, your servants, a discerning heart to govern your people and distinguish between right and wrong. May the Lord bless you, safeguard you, and be gracious to you, in the name of Jesua, Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Stella. Appreciate your time here. Thank you.
Judge, would you like to make any opening comments before we begin?
Yeah, thank you. I would like to welcome all of you to Commissioners Court. We have Commissioner Stout is online, and Commissioner Court now won't be able to make it this time. But obviously, on behalf of all of us, we thank you for being here, wishing you a tremendous Monday and just a very blessed week. So, thank you for being here. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Item number four is the Consent Agenda composed of items 4A through 4AC. We would like to request for items 4AA, 4AB, and 4AC be deleted. These items were previously postponed June 3, 2024. They were added back to the agenda of June 10, 2024, and approved at that time. Are there any items members of the court or public would like to pull for discussion?
Do you have any? No? Thank you. Move to approve.
We have a motion by Judge Samaniego, second by Commissioner Leon. The voting is open? I'm sorry. It was a second by Commissioner Olgin.
Thank you.
I'm having difficulties opening my voting, but I vote aye.
Carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Stout.
Item 5, Resolutions. 5A. Approve and adopt a resolution declaring June 19, 2024 as Juneteenth in El Paso County, Texas.
Commissioner Stout?
Yes, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I have the honor of reading this resolution into the record. Just one moment. I need to pull it up here on my on my computer. All right. So I think, and I hope that everyone knows that, or what Juneteenth is. If not, you're going to learn from this resolution. It never ceases to amaze me that the great state of Texas seceded not once, but twice to unfortunately keep slavery. First from Mexico, which abolished slavery well before the US, and then from the United States as part of the Confederacy. While this is a celebration of freedom, I can't help but think about how that context shapes our modern times. But we know that knowledge reigns supreme and we'll keep educating, keep trying to change hearts and minds. And until we stamp out racial prejudice and hate, until we understand that we're all in this together, whether it's the community of El Paso, or the state of Texas, or our country, or, you know, this little blue marble that we live on in space. So, thank you to the Black El Paso Voice and to everyone here who keeps knowledge alive and works to uplift the Black community in El Paso. And in so doing, participates in lifting all of El Paso. So I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution, and then we're going to hear from our guests. Need to pull up the resolution real quickly. Just give me a moment. Sorry. Well, I'm having trouble pulling it up. Sorry. Give me one more moment. Okay, we got it. Sorry about the wait, y'all. Okay, the resolution states, "Whereas on June 19, 1865, people of Texas first learned that all slaves in the former Confederacy had been freed, two years after President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation to the rebellion states. And whereas nearly 250,000 former slaves in Texas were to be given absolute equality in their personal and property rights following the reading of General Order Number Three, delivered by Union General Gordon Granger and Gallison following the end of the American Civil War. And whereas on January 1, 1980, Juneteenth became an official state holiday in Texas through the efforts of Al Edwards, a Black American state legislator. The successful passage of this bill marked Juneteenth as the first emancipation celebration granted official state recognition. And whereas Juneteenth, also called Freedom Day or Emancipation Day, remains the most popular and widely recognized annual event celebrating the end of slavery in the United States. And whereas Juneteenth stands as a poignant reminder of the atrocities endured by Black Americans, it simultaneously commemorates the formidable challenges and barriers surmounted in the relentless pursuit of full civil rights, voting rights, and social justice, while honoring the monumental achievements and contributions of millions of Black Americans. And whereas local organizations and initiatives such as Juneteenth El Paso, Black El Paso Voice, McCall Neighborhood Center, Oro Temple Nine, Oro Court Number 20, El Paso Holy Royal Arch Masons Number 90, Amplify El Paso, and the Black Round Table exist to properly honor, observe, and preserve Black culture, heritage, and history in El Paso and other areas of the Southwest. And whereas, Juneteenth El Paso invites all governmental entities to join in initiatives to celebrate and educate the community about Juneteenth. And whereas, the National Juneteenth theme is "The Truth", and now therefore be it resolved by the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court that June 19 be recognized and celebrated as Juneteenth in El Paso County, Texas, signed this 17th day of June 2024. The Honorable County Commissioners Court."
We have a motion by Commissioner Stout, second by Judge Samaniego. The voting is open.
And I still can't get my voting open, so of course, I-
Commissioner, can you turn on your camera for the vote, please?
Yep. Sorry, I apologize. Technical difficulties here trying to do this on my phone. I don't have my voting app open, so I vote aye, of course.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, welcome. Thank you.
Welcome, y'all. Thank you so much. Sorry about the delay in pulling that up. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Thank you.
My name is Monica Tucker. I'm the founder and publisher of Black El Paso Voice and Amplify El Paso and Juneteenth El Paso. And with me today, I have Mr. Charles Smith, who is the owner of Gentleman's Boutique, and Mr. Ryan Adams, who will also say a few words about Juneteenth, and then we'll come back to that.
Good morning, Judge Samaniego and county commissioners. My name is Ryan Adams. I host a podcast on Black El Paso Voice called Beware the Day, where Black History Month is from January 1 through December 31. I want to thank Commissioner Stout for that outstanding history lesson. He's welcome on my podcast at any time. But I want to thank you for this proclamation, and that's all I have to say at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Charles.
Hello, everyone. Of course, my name is Charles Smith, owner of Gentleman Boutique by GON. I just want to thank you all for this proclamation, especially for a young gentleman like me. It's amazing to be able to celebrate a month with family. You know, when we had our Juneteenth celebration, it was amazing just to see everybody culturally coming together. We wasn't there because there was a fight, news, shooting, no, but we was coming to celebrate. And I think this is a big, you know, to embark on, especially in the city of El Paso. So I thank you. I truly do. Thank you.
And we'd like to definitely thank Commissioner Stout, who was always there for us in the community. We thank Commissioners Court for this resolution. And like we mentioned, it's about educating the community about what Juneteenth is. This year, the city joined us in celebrating Juneteenth on Saturday. And like they mentioned, we had various cultures there representing. We were able to educate the community about why we celebrate Juneteenth and to help people understand that it is history, it's Black history, but overall, it's American history. And that's where the education begins in the community. Unfortunately, each year so far, when the city or anyone in a government entity shares anything about Juneteenth, some in the community do come out and they comment, and they say that it's not worth it. So that just shows us that there's more education that is needed in the community when it comes to why we celebrate this Freedom Day. And Juneteenth is important because it is representative of the end of slavery. But again, the education continues. I'm a part of the National Juneteenth Foundation, those who championed to make this a national holiday and recognizing it. And our colors are red, white, and blue because we're American. Sometimes you'll see the red, green, and black representative of Africa. And yes, we are of African descent, but we're Americans, and we have to represent that. And for our ancestors who fought for the flag, that's why our colors are red, white, and blue. So it begins with educating the community on that also. So we have taken extra steps to educate the community through our publications. And one is Amplify El Paso, and I would like to give each of you a copy of our inaugural publication for Amplify El Paso. It's published twice every two months, but it identifies those in the community who we believe their voices should be amplified. So if you don't mind, I'd like to make sure to give you all a copy. And in addition to our publications, we have podcasts, and we have other initiatives where we want to amplify our voices. There's someone else here today who will be getting a resolution, and it's just an example of what we aim to fight for. And that includes Dr. Alessandro Hamilton, MC Nice, the first person from El Paso to go platinum as an artist. So many people don't know that, but those are the types of voices we want to amplify, and he has an initiative that we want to support also. So that's how we continue Juneteenth. Juneteenth doesn't end the next day. It continues. And in addition, we have what we're doing on Juneteenth called the State of Black El Paso. We want to invite you as commissioners and the city to understand where we currently stand here in El Paso so that you can understand what we want to do in the community to help educate the public about our existence. So I thank you again for this resolution.
Well, Monica, Ryan, and Charles, thank you very much. And, you know, it is very significant. But it's also what a beautiful thing that, you know, how we, our cultures and Black heritage and, you know, I've always said that, you know, the companies come here and they tell us that they can get over the people. They keep saying the people. They don't come for the mountains. They come to see them, but they leave, right? But they come here and they want to do business. And I've always said, you know, we have to continue. Whatever we are doing right, we have to continue. It's not going to happen by itself. And the uniqueness comes with these relationships that we have, the way we come together, the unity that we have, how we, when, you know, we're having our fifth anniversary of the Walmart tragedy, and how we came together, how we created a beautiful garden, all of these things that happen, they're not going to happen by itself. And I think this idea of the education and letting us know the significance of why we are this unique. I keep saying we're the last stronghold of humanitarianism here in El Paso, that, you know, most communities can't even get close to the kinds of things that we do here. And I've said over and over, if we drop our guard, that gives a right for anybody in the border states to be less or, you know, be less of what we are. So we thank you for everything that you do to continue this relationship in our community, this embracement of, you know, of being together and the diversities and how diversities can come together. And I think you, the three of you, and most of the Black organizations, I don't know if we give them enough credit, because I think you do more for us to do that, and we need to reciprocate and be part of that unity. So we really thank you for what you do. This is a very unique community, and it's unique because of yourselves and also the next resolution that we have. It shows the uniqueness of who we are. So we thank you for today. Commissioner Stout, back to you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Judge, and thank you to all of the members of the Black community that have joined us this morning and helping us to educate our community so that we can have a deeper understanding about this and many other issues. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll go down and take a picture. Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
Item 5B. Approve and adopt a resolution commending artist, philanthropist, Christian hip-hop artist, motivational speaker, actor, and three-time bestselling author, Dr. Alessandro L. Hamilton, for his contributions to education and cultural enrichment in El Paso.
Commissioner?
All right. Thank you, Judge. I also have the distinct honor of being able to read this resolution into the record. And frankly, I'm a bit at a loss for words here, believe it or not. I have to admit that I did not know Dr. Hamilton until my office was contacted by Ms. Logan. And we read the materials. We were amazed at his accomplishments. We love to celebrate El Paso in every way, including with our resolutions. And to learn about an El Pasawan who has achieved such heights, and then to know that he wants to bring his gifts back home, well, you know, it's just remarkable. And so I'm going to go ahead and read that resolution, and then we can say, if you didn't know, now you know. And after the resolution, we'll hear from our guests and hopefully take a note picture. And, Dr., I think I see up at the podium?
Yes.
Okay. The resolution reads, "Whereas Dr. Alessandro L. Hamilton, partially known as MC, N-I-C-E, an esteemed and multifaceted individual, has distinguished himself as an artist, philanthropist, Christian hip-hop artist, motivational speaker, actor, and three-time bestselling author, demonstrating exceptional talent and dedication throughout his career. And whereas, Dr. Hamilton holds the prestigious distinction of being the first artist from El Paso to achieve quadruple platinum status, a remarkable achievement that underscores his deep-rooted love and appreciation for his hometown, which serves as a constant source of inspiration for his music. And whereas, in 2023, Dr. Hamilton was appointed as Vice Chancellor of the university, further showcasing his commitment to higher education and leadership in academia. And whereas, Dr. Hamilton's visionary plans to establish a state-of-the-art performing arts school in El Paso, Texas, catering to students from grades K through 12, represents a significant endeavor to provide quality education and inspire youth through the arts, while ensuring self-funding to alleviate any financial burden on taxpayers. And whereas, Dr. Hamilton's musical artifacts will be showcased in the esteemed exhibition, Musica Sin Prongeras: 20th Century to Now, at the El Paso Museum of History, highlighting his significant contributions as one of the esteemed artists from El Paso, Texas. And whereas, Dr. Hamilton's deep-rooted connection to El Paso is evident in his decision to establish the school in the city where he grew up and attended elementary and secondary schools, including Ruske Elementary, Travis Elementary, Logan Heights Elementary, Bassett Junior High, Cannon Hills Junior High, Irvin High School, and Austin High School. And whereas, Dr. Hamilton's commitment to transforming El Paso into a destination location for education is further exemplified by his association with the El Paso Community College through his book titled Fifty Shades of Love, L-O-V-E, Learning Our Various Emotions, with a vision to enhance educational opportunities for students in the community. And whereas, Dr. Hamilton's outstanding contributions as MC Nice have been recognized both nationally and locally, including resolutions from seniors, sorry, Senator Cesar Blanco, Mayor Emma Sharif of Compton, California, and a citation from Mayor Eric Adams of New York, as well as a lifetime achievement award signed by President Joe Biden, and his receipt of an honorary doctor degree in music with the second one forthcoming in humanitarianism. And whereas, Dr. Hamilton's endeavors to establish a state-of-the-art performance arts school and his dedication to educational excellence and cultural preservation will not only honor his achievements, but also benefit the citizens of El Paso through job creation and educational opportunities. And now therefore be it resolved by the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court that this hereby acknowledgement commends Dr. Alessandro L. Hamilton for his remarkable contributions to education and cultural enrichment in El Paso, Texas, and expresses its support for visionary initiatives aimed at inspiring future generations and fostering a vibrant cultural and educational landscape in this city. Signed this 17th day of June 2024, the Honorable County Commissioners Court."
We have a motion by Commissioner Stout, second by Commissioner Leon. The voting is open.
And again, I can't get my voting app open, and of course, I'll vote aye.
Motion carries.
Dr. Hamilton?
Thank you, sir. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner Stout. I appreciate you for giving me the history lesson on myself. So that's beautiful. And the commissioners and judge, I appreciate everything that's, you know, that's, you know, finally being recognized in a city where I really spent my life. Although I was born in Los Angeles, I was Chuko-raised, you know. I grew up in the Northeast. And I was cultivated here, but not really able to elaborate on that cultivation. So I appreciate that. I'm just giving you, I'm one of them dudes that's like, I guess, gap bridger, right? I'm African-American and Latino, right? So it was kind of interesting growing up where you had the, you know, when I grew up in the 80s and the 90s, it was like Black and Brown was a real problem, you know what I mean? And so for me, it's always been one of them things where I need to figure out how I can, you know, solve the, you know, try to bridge the gap. And one of the things I did, I started in music with the first Latin rap group in the history of rap music that hit the Billboard charts called The Lighter Shade of Brown, right? And then we ultimately ended up putting out the greatest hits in the 90s, and then I reinvented myself where I became a multi-platinum producer, where I produced artists like Tupac and Nas. Then I went on, and not only that, I created the first African-American animated music feature that was on Netflix. It was the first for Netflix. And we opened up the doors, you know, for that. And then now I'm on Amazon Prime and Apple TV. And so now, but then, not to mention, I did eight motion picture soundtracks. One on one Oscar movie called Crash, so I'm also associated with an Oscar. I did the theme song for the NBA in 2010. Turned around and God was like, I need you to take your talents back to Christian rap. And I was like, for real? Lord, I'm about to get the Maybach and, you know, I'm about to get the mansion, you know, like, why I gotta go now? You know, and so I was obedient, but ended up coming into gospel and becoming one of the first independent artists to do six number-one records on the Billboard charts, including a number-one gospel album, right? This is me being from El Paso. And so when you take that, this is me paving the road for what is about to come to El Paso. So ultimately, when I got into gospel and Christian, gospel wasn't privy to Christian rap. Like, they didn't really, it wasn't the thing they was checking for. So I helped open the doors and usher, you know, new ways where I helped create the first faith-based hip-hop radio station in the world with 2 million listeners a month, and we became the first station in the history of gospel to win a Stella Award, which is the equivalent of the Grammys, you know, in gospel. So I take all that knowledge and I take all the things that I've learned, and I'm saying, okay. I watched Khalid come, you know, and I was like, okay. And then I seen Evander Graham, and I seen Elia Esparza on American Idol, and I was like, these are all Chuko people, right? And so the thing is, they had to go out in order to elevate. So for me, it's like, what can we do to keep that here, cultivate it here, so that they be prepared when they go out? And so what I've decided to do was, if I can introduce my publicist, Dr. Karen Leslie Logan from Upscale PR Media. And then I'm also represented by my first lady of my church, Northeast Bible Restoration First Lady, Sabrina Senegal is in the building. So what I want to do is build a state-of-the-art technology and performing arts school that is independent of state funding so that these programs don't get shut down. Because that's what ultimately ends up happening. The state runs out of funding, programs get shut down. Now the kids have to return to the streets, and then we all know what happens. It's a 50-50 chance. Some make it, some don't. and then we all know what happens. It's a 50-50 chance. Some make it, some don't. So for this, what we want to do is create a K through 12, right? In that K through 12, the kids that are coming in will start a scholarship fund at K. So when they graduate from the high school, they already have college paid for, right? Or if they don't want to go to college and they want to go to trade schools, we'll have the trade school pay for. Or if they take the business economics in the courses in there, what happens if they pass that? If they want to start a business, we'll give them the startup money for their business. I want kids to win all the way around. If we can cultivate it here, because there's plenty of talent, right? And it's a beautiful city with no natural disasters, by the way. So that's a beautiful thing, right? Then I believe we can change their minds and change, you know, the trajectory of those that are coming out.
Thank you. Dr. Logan?
I want to thank everyone for giving him the resolution and the things that he's going to be building with the K through 12 Performing Arts School. We're very excited about that, and it's going to really change the lives of the community of El Paso. But it's also going to create job opportunities and give students a resource for furthering their education. And I want to thank you so much for everything that you've done and continue to do for the citizens of El Paso. Thank you.
Thank you very-
One more thing. Sure. Everything's going to be El Paso-made. So even like, I'm meeting with architects that are here. Even though I met with some of the major architects like Gensler and whatever, but we're gonna go with, my man Pacelli is here, but we're gonna, everything I want to do is gonna be from here, so that way we can drive the excitement.
Dr. Hamilton, what a tremendous vision. It's just Khalid who? After I hear that, I was gonna say, Dr. Hamilton, where have you been all my life? But about three-quarters, you weren't born, okay? So that's what makes it difficult. But no, no, this is amazing because, you know, El Paso, you know, we all keep saying we have these different narratives and, you know, we have to fight who we are. You know, we have to let people know who we are, not who they think we are, constantly. And so when someone like yourself comes back and gives to the community, you put us back on the map, but you put us back the way we should be. And this is so important. It's almost frustrating how we fight and fight for people to see us different. And then now, you know, when someone like yourself speaks for us, it creates that credibility, that opportunity for people to see us in a different light. And so we thank you. You know, nothing makes me happier when somebody comes back, and nothing makes me sadder when somebody leaves El Paso, and you're doing both. You're gonna be here, but also maybe keep more of our young adults, you know? We keep losing them. They go to other communities and do amazing things, just like yourself. But thank you so much, Dr. Logan. Thank you as well, and everyone. Commissioner, tremendous resolution. And like I said, you're putting us on the map, and we'll do everything possible to make sure that we enhance that opportunity. So thank you, Dr. Hamilton.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Stout?
Thank you. Thank you so much, Dr. Hamilton. What an illustrious background you have, and it looks like it's gonna continue to shine moving into the future. So happy to be able to recognize you today and hopefully get to work with you moving into the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 5C. A proven adopter resolution recognizing El Paso Executive Forum Day in El Paso County, Texas.
Commissioner Olgin?
Thank you, Judge. It is my honor to read this resolution into the record. This resolution recognizes an incredible organization led by amazing women who do so much wonderful work in our community. Leila, thank you for gathering all of these wonderful women with us here today. Here's the resolution. Whereas Executive Forum was incorporated in July 1984 by five founders and to date has 136 members. And whereas Executive Forum is a network of professional business persons dedicated to the economic, civic, and cultural development of the El Paso metropolitan area. And whereas Executive Forum promotes the expansion of professional opportunities for its membership. And whereas Executive Forum enhances the effectiveness of El Paso's leaders through programs of leadership, human relations training, business, and community awareness. And whereas Executive Forum encourages and supports career planning and development activities of El Paso's youth. And whereas Executive Forum is an organization of dynamic leaders dedicated to the empowerment of women who work to impact the economic, civic, and cultural landscape of this region. And whereas Executive Forum is an organization of women working for women. And whereas Executive Forum is celebrating its 40th anniversary with 136 members strong. And whereas its members have included professional executives, including business owners, CEOs, educators, doctors, pilots, judges, elected officials, including El Paso's first female mayor, attorneys, human resources officers, city and county managers, certified public accountants, administrators, healthcare professionals, nonprofit leaders, appraisers, architects, and engineers, and numerous other esteemed women leaders of our community. And now therefore, the El Paso County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim this day, June 17, 2024, as El Paso Executive Forum Day. In official recognition thereof, the Commissioners Court hereby affixes their signatures on the 17th day of June 2024. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Commissioner Olgin, second by Judge Tomanyego. The voting is open. Commissioner Stout? Motion carries.
Leila, welcome.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Thank you very much for this honor. I'm Leila Melendez, this year's president of Executive Forum. This year, we excitedly celebrate 40 years of Executive Forum. It's a membership organization that was formed in 1984 by women executives and community leaders dedicated to the empowerment of women. Today, we have over 130 members that include current and former executives, including our founder Catherine Brennan, a lifelong art and civic advocate, former El Paso mayor Susie Azar, former city manager and deputy city manager Joyce Wilson and Debbie Hamlin, our county administrator Betsy Keller, El Paso Electric CEO Kelly Tomlin, former judge Kitty Shield, who was the first woman elected to the bench in El Paso, El Paso Inc. editor Secret Warret, Texas Tech leaders Ursula Kripa and Stephanie Woods, and many business owners and leaders, including Patty Holland Branch, Susan Eisen, Aliana Podaca, Lorraine Hewitt, Marina Montzis Vice, Cindy Myassas Henry, and several nonprofit CEOs, including Tracy Yellen, Susan Goodell, Laura Ponce, Lisa Sacedo, and also Melissa Carrillo from El Paso County, who serves on our board this year. I also want to recognize Betsy Keller, our county administrator. Betsy served as president last year and set the bar very high for her leadership. She has remained a great mentor and friend to me and to the other members of Executive Forum. Betsy is a great example of what Executive Forum is, because as busy as she is at work and in her life, and all of, as well as all of our other members are, we come together at Executive Forum to support one another. Executive Forum provides a supportive place for women in formal leadership roles to share experiences, leverage their expertise, and amplify their influence. Today, there are several members here today, and I invite some of them to say a few words or introduce themselves about Executive Forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Leila. You didn't know that Betsy's, there are triplets? There's two, there's three of them. That's the only way I can figure out how she does this.
Good morning. Elsa Borrego from El Pasoans Fighting Hunger.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, Melissa Carrillo. I proudly serve the county of El Paso. I've been a member of Executive Forum now for just a few years, but I'm grateful for the support that I get from these women. Truly is remarkable.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name's Susan Goodell, and I'm with El Pasoans Fighting Hunger Food Bank, and I'm a proud member of Executive Forum and proud to serve on the board.
Thank you, Susan.
Judge, Commissioners, first of all, thank you for your support, allowing me to participate in these types of activities and be involved in our community. I feel very fortunate that I work for a Commissioners Court that is extremely supportive of us being involved. I also want to thank Leila for those kind words. But I will tell you, I get so much out of Executive Forum. The benefit of now knowing these people on a more individual basis, so that when there's an issue or we need help with something, I can easily, I'm gonna call Mika Short at the Community Foundation, maybe, or Paso del Norte Foundation. They can help us with this. Or being able to call Susan Goodell and say, we have an issue, we need food, you know? Things like that, the partnerships that we've made through Executive Forum are invaluable. And then also, I am always proud, and something else I get from the Commissioners Court is the ability to introduce other county leaders to participate in Executive Forum and get these same opportunities. I just really appreciate all of the support from the court and from my peers and friends through Executive Forum.
Betsy, we're very, very proud of you. She used that, "we allow her"? Are you serious? Thank you. Thank you so much for everything that you do. Welcome.
Judge, good morning. Commissioners, good. My name is Solidad Masoco. I work for USI Insurance Services, and I have the privilege of being a 20-year member of Executive Forum. Thank you for this recognition.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, for this, a great honor for Executive Forum. My name is Sezi Collins. I'm general counsel with El Paso Independent School District. And Executive Forum is a great example of women helping women within the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I've been in Executive Forum, I don't remember, but it's more about seven or eight years. And I can tell you that part of the excitement is the diversity in backgrounds and the inclusion of public servants in knowing that there is female leadership within our government. And while I don't sit in a chair where we engage in policymaking, I can tell you, just as a pure public servant that comes to work to see the people of El Paso and have them in the courtrooms, it's a great honor to be representative of this organization and have that leadership behind me, because it does teach us about the world. It teaches us about our community. And that, as a tool for me, as a judge upstairs, I can tell you, it's invaluable. So I'm really grateful for your recognition of this organization. Forty years of standing together, of supporting each other, helping each other, just holding each other up, has been a great feat. Not too many organizations can claim that sort of accomplishment of 40 years of service in this community. So thank you.
Judge Peters, we are very proud of you as well. And I've gotten to be more interactive with you this last couple of years, but just amazing what she does with the council, the judges. It's just been great to work with you. Thank you for your passion and your commitment. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners and Judge. I'm Mika Short. I'm with the Paso del Norte Community Foundation, and it has been, I've been blessed to be a member of Executive Forum for the past 11 years. And it truly is so rewarding and so beneficial to be able to collaborate and work alongside such phenomenal women that are involved in Executive Forum.
Thank you very much. And your partnership is very welcome. Thank you.
The circle of support and mentorship of Executive Forum allows us to refuel and re-energize every time we are together, knowing we have each other's backs as we continue to lead and make positive change for El Paso. I'm so proud of Executive Forum and truly excited to celebrate our 40th anniversary. Thank you for this recognition.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, I'm gonna sort of liken you to Dr. Hamilton. Most of us, we know you, but we need to more, know more of you, because this is a tremendous forum. And just like Dr. Hamilton, and I'm wondering, how did we not know more? And the same thing for each one of you. I mean, I know you, most of you, all of you, I know you very well, consider you friends, and, but I think more women need to understand what you do. This would be just encouragement of the things I've seen in each one of you and more of the young, our young females' understanding, you know, what you do would be just tremendous. So I know who I can pass it to. Commissioner Olgin?
Judge, now, thank you all once again for all of the incredible work that you do to help lift up women here in El Paso. I know sometimes women feel that they're alone doing things without the support that they may need, but it's wonderful to know that an organization exists here in El Paso who makes sure that women are never alone, that we're always there for each other, that we're always there to lift each other up. So thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to present this resolution on your behalf, and congratulations.
Can we nominate?
All right. Nice big smile. Thank you. You're welcome.
Item number six is public comment. We do have one speaker sign up for public comments, Ms. Elizabeth Crawford.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Elizabeth.
Good morning, sir. As our nation and our world this month focus on pride, I would like to speak briefly about King Nebuchadnezzar II, a man known through history, a man known by the account in the Bible. Many people are familiar with the Hanging Gardens of Babylon, the famed Hanging Gardens, King Nebuchadnezzar II. Who was King Nebuchadnezzar? In 586 B.C., he conquered Judah, destroyed Jerusalem, was recognized as the most powerful man in the world. He destroyed the temple, ordered the Babylonian captivity of the Jewish people. God in mercy used the captive Daniel to speak to Nebuchadnezzar about the living God. He used Daniel and his friend Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego, who refused to vow to the king. When Nebuchadnezzar was lifted up in pride, God humbled Nebuchadnezzar. He spent months living in insanity like an animal. In mercy, the Lord restored Nebuchadnezzar. These are his words upon restoration from the book of Daniel. "And at the end of the days, I, Nebuchadnezzar, lifted up my eyes to heaven, and my understanding returned to me, and I bless the Most High, and I praise and honor him who lives forever, whose dominion is an everlasting dominion, and his kingdom is from generation to generation, and all the inhabitants of the earth are reputed as nothing; and he does according to his will in the army of heaven and among the inhabitants of the earth; and none can restrain his hand or say to him, 'What doest thou?'" At the same time, my reason returned to me, and for the glory of my kingdom, my honor and brightness returned to me, and my counselors and my lords thought unto me, and I was established in my kingdom, and excellent majesty was added to me. Now, I, Nebuchadnezzar, praise and extol and honor the King of heaven, all of whose works are truth and his ways judgment, and those that walk in pride he is able to abate." These are the words of Nebuchadnezzar, the king who has conquered God's people, the Jews, who is humbled and then blessed by God in God's mercy. As our world celebrates pride this month, there is no one in whom we are to take, there is one in whom we are to take pride in, one whose power merits being proud of. There's one message that is sufficiently awesome to break human pride. That is the message of the gospel. We're told in Romans, Chapter 1, "For I am not ashamed of the gospel of Christ, for that the power of God unto salvation to everyone that believes, to the Jew first, and also to the Greek, to the Gentile. For therein is the righteousness of God revealed from faith to faith, as it is written, the just shall live by faith." That is the one in whom we are to take pride, a Savior who is both just and the Justifier of the sinner, who bows to him for mercy. That is a Savior who is worth truly being proud of. Thank you so much. Hope you have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker, we have Ms. Lorena Rodriguez.
Welcome, Lorena.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Lorena Rodriguez, County Administration. Last month, I had informed the court that El Paso County was participating in the Veterans' Local Government Management Fellowship with the International City County Management Association, also known as ICMA. I'd like to introduce you to our other fellow. I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Darius Barard. Mr. Barard is a Staff Sergeant in the United States Air Force and has served our country for seven years. He is currently a professional military education instructor in the 49th Force Support Squadron at Holloman Air Force Base in New Mexico. Sergeant Barard prepares senior airmen to become all-domain warfighting air and space professional and first-line supervisors who can supervise and lead teams to support the employment of air, space, and cyberspace power. He instructs over 1,000 hours of curriculum and educates over 300 students yearly in accordance with the Thomas N. Barnes Center for Enlisted Education to solidify strategic leadership and development for six major commands. Sergeant Barard holds a Bachelor of Arts in Sociology and currently pursuing a Master's in Public Administration. Sergeant Barard is married to Thylacia, his wife, and has three beautiful children. In his free time, Darius enjoys reading, physical fitness, but most of all, traveling with his family. County Administration is excited to have Mr. Barard, and he will be assisting the Capital Planning and Performance Management Division, participate in strategic planning, and assist other county projects, and also participate and work with our Human Resources Department. Judge and Commissioners, please help me welcome Mr. Darius Barard.
Welcome. Welcome, Sergeant. Glad to have you.
Thank you, sir. Good morning to you all. Nice to meet you. First off, I'd like to say thank you all for welcoming me to El Paso County. I'd also like to say, you know, the support that I've seen shown towards veterans, not only by the county itself, but by the county employees, has been something awesome to see. Speaking from my personal experience, you know, from the initial interview process all the way up until the administrative side of things and everything in between, I can honestly say that it has been a smooth process with getting into this fellowship here at El Paso County. And with that being said, I'd like to say a few thank yous. First off, I'd like to thank Lorena Rodriguez. She's been able to just help me throughout the whole process, you know, answering any type of question that I've had, most importantly, being patient, because if I had a dollar for every time I asked a question I called her, I'd probably be a millionaire right now. So with that being said, you know, she was never quick to get off the phone or saying that she was busy or anything like that. She was able to answer my questions anytime that I called her. I would also like to thank Michelle Cochran, who was also able to answer my questions during the interview process. She was very professional as well. And I'd like to thank Chantel Cruz and the whole Human Resources Department, because they were able to, you know, communicate effectively throughout email, make sure I had everything prepared to start the fellowship today. So I can 100% without a doubt say that the professionalism, core value that's instilled within El Paso County was truly upheld, and I hope to continue to add on to that, as well as every other positive thing that this county has to offer. So nice to meet you all again, and I'm looking forward to starting this fellowship.
Thank you and welcome. Thank you for the kind words, because that's how we feel about, you know, everyone that works with us, and, but to hear it from you in such a short period of time, we thank you for that. I know it's going to be great for us having you, and I hope it's great for you. Anything that we could do, we're here for you. This is a very important part of the Veterans Capital USA to show, right, that we have to be the role models for the rest of the community, and so thank you for that, and we wish you the best of luck during your time.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Sergeant.
I look forward to talking to you all more as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Lorena. Thank you.
Item number seven, purchasing, 7A. Approved and authorized the purchase of as-needed lodging services and booking tool for Community Services Department and the El Paso County Texas, using Texas Smart Buy 971M13062 awarded to Hotel Engine, Inc. of Denver, Colorado, Community Services Department for a total estimated cost of $3,328,500 and county-wide rebate as indicated in tabulation. Funding is available in SGG Humanitarian 23 Operating Expenses and SGG Shelter 23 Operating Expenses.
Welcome, Karen.
Thank you, Judge. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Karen Davidson, County Purchasing Agent, and we're seeking the court's approval and authorization to purchase an as-needed lodging services and booking tool, and we are for community development, and we're using a cooperative methodology through the state of Texas, Smart Buy, for Hotel Engine out of Denver, Colorado. The total amount that we're seeking in approval this morning is $3,328,500, and we've broken down the different costs and the backup for you. I can speak to the procurement, and I have Ms. Gutierrez or Ms. Gonzalez from the operational side and community development.
We have a motion by Judge Samaniego, second by Commissioner Leon. The voting is open. Carrie's.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. You have a wonderful day.
Have a great day.
You, too.
Item eight, Public Works, 8A. Approved and authorized the acceptance of the Fiscal Year 2024 Neighborhood Improvement Program Project Award for a proposed basketball court at Risinger Park in Favens, Texas.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. Judge Commissioner Shawnee Rodriguez with Planning and Development. I'm here today to test for the approval for the Fiscal Year 2024 Neighborhood Improvement Program Project to be awarded to the Favens Neighborhood Association for the proposed basketball court at Risinger Park.
Commissioner Olgin, you have any comments?
Yes, now, I just, before your presentation, Shawnee, I just want to personally thank you for all of the tremendous efforts that you've made working with the Neighborhood Association in Favens. It's a group that came together basically from scratch specifically to try to get funding for this project. As some of you all may remember, Risinger Park was blessed to be able to have one of the All Abilities Playgrounds that we received funding for here at the county last year, and the community absolutely loves it. Unfortunately, the placement of the All Abilities Park ended up doing away with the basketball court, and the community has been just asking for their basketball court back, and we've told them that we'll do everything possible to make sure that we get their basketball court back. And so I really want to thank Shawnee, I want to thank Michael, everyone, Norma at Public Works for everything that they've done to make this a possibility. I know that the community of Favens will just, they will be so eternally grateful for being able to have their basketball court back, and then also, of course, the beautiful All Abilities Playground, Risinger Park. It's a small neighborhood park, but it makes such a big difference in the lives of the community of Favens. So thank you again. Thank you for all of your work. Michael, thank you. Norma, of course, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Olgin.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that. Okay, so if you all recall, the Neighborhood Association order was approved back in 2020, and the Neighborhood Improvement Program Order was approved earlier this year. This policy is basically meant to support and fund small-scale projects within these neighborhoods, and again, this is wholly dependent on the budget for that specific fiscal year. This is to provide equitable distribution across precincts. These projects are vetted for cost and constructability by county staff. Their highly-developed scoring matrix to select projects which are impactful, desirable, and achievable. So the funding that was provided for the Fiscal Year 2024 was $125,000. The application process for these neighborhood associations, they have to be registered with the County of El Paso. As far as the process goes, if, when they apply for these projects, before that project's start date, these neighborhood associations must be registered. The project selection also is, it's very important to note that these projects must be on county-owned property or the public right-of-way. So if these are outside of the jurisdictional boundary or municipality, they typically have to be within that public right-of-way. So again, these are small-scale permanent physical improvements, they have to have a 10-year expected lifespan. These are located no further than a quarter mile outside of the association boundary. And if, for example, they, there is a request, let's say for a speed hump, then a traffic calming request study must be warranted for that. That's just an example. The park amenities are essential for community engagement, exercise, and recreational activities. These are spaces that provide a point of civic engagement and community belonging. They provide a space for people of all ages to enjoy the amenities and to stay active. So overall, this just enhances health, fitness, and then just the togetherness of a community. This is an aerial of Risinger Park now. As you can see, you can see the All Amenities Playground, and the basketball court will be connected to that. Some of the basketball court specifications, this is a full basketball court, so this includes a concrete slab 84 feet by 50 feet. A striping will be included, which includes the two-inch-wide painted lines. This provides an all-ages amenity to the park, so this complements the playground, the wraparound sidewalk, and the ADA parking as well. This is the basketball court layout. As you can see, you have, again, the All Amenities Playground, and then you see the proposed basketball court there that's connected to the playground. The Favens Neighborhood Association were registered on April 17th of this year, and they went through the initial process, they completed all the documentation, they provided the application, they submitted the application to our department. On the same day, they were actually, they actually were able to submit their application for the project they were looking into. Some of the methods that they, they did were door-to-door canvassing, they hosted community meetings, which I was able to, to be there for a couple of those. So in total, they actually gathered 40-plus signatures from these community members. So the County Cross-Functional Project Scoring Committee, that was done on May 7th by county staff. Again, this was a cross-functional review from the Parks Department, Planning and Development, and Public Works as well. We reviewed all components and criteria to ensure the comprehensive and fair evaluation. We ensured a thorough evaluation of both the strategic importance and practical execution of the project application. We, of course, evaluated the feasibility of the project by examining the proposed budget and allocation of all resources. So ultimately, with the scoring process, out of 100 points, the association scored a total of 83.50 points. That concludes my presentation. During Commissioners, do you have any questions? I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Commissioner Olgin, second by Judge Samaniego. The voting is open. Commissioners, doubt is absent. Motion carries.
So much, Shawnee. Thank you all. Have a good day. Thank you very much.
Item nine, Budget and Finance, 9A. Receive a presentation regarding the FY23 Grant Funding Report.
Morning, John.
Good morning. Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Ms. Keller. So, as you know, while the team is getting ready, since I started in Marsh, I've been trying to hide, and I was calling it...
Good luck with that one.
Yeah. I was calling it honeymoon period, but then Ms. Keller told me that I joined when the budget season started, so therefore, my honeymoon period is like way over.
Yes.
And so today, we're coming to you with two presentations, not one. The first one is the Grant Funding Report. The second one is the Budget Register. We'll go over that. And then, obviously, on Thursday, we have the budget hearing. So three presentations in one week. So yes, Ms. Keller, I realize my honeymoon period is way over. So with that being said, I've been using the time to wrap my head around the operations of El Paso County and the wonderful team that we have here. And I want to, actually, I want to really commend the team, the grants team, for everything that they are doing, you're gonna see in the report that we have, all the good work that they have been trying to do to serve the community, to help our constituents, and to raise the grants funding and relief pressure from our general fund. Our grants administration manager is Ms. Letizia Vizcano, who is going to introduce herself right now. She got to her position recently after 16 years with the county, so she is more deserving of this position than anybody else, but please, Ms. Letty, introduce yourself and your team.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Thank you, John, for that. Thank you for allowing us to be here to present this, make this presentation to you. us to be here to present this, make this presentation to you. You will, we're going to show you a presentation that is going to include a lot of the hard work that our team has done, and that hard work could not have been accomplished by the great team that I am so proud to be a part of. They show up every day. They work hard, and they are great public servants. Our team is fairly new to the county, so you may not have had the opportunity to meet them. So I'm going to ask them to each personally present themselves to you.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. My name is Lisette Soltero, and I've been a proud employee of the county for two years.
Good morning. My name is Isala Hooper, and I've been with the county for one year, and just want to say thank you so much for always supporting us. Really appreciate it.
Funny that we lined up exactly the way we got hired. I'm the newbie. My name is Laura Carpio. I've been with the county since October. Proud of it.
All of you. We're very aware of your help, okay? We need it badly.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
So our county, our grants team, we support and assist all departments within the county to research, to apply for grants, and to manage those grants once they are funded, and that is what our team does. We address all county needs, and we ensure that those grants align with the strategic plan that the county has adopted. We've met, okay. We're a little behind here.
And I was wondering.
The purpose of this presentation is to provide you with data and information of grant applications that have been submitted, grants that have been awarded, and grant-funded personnel. This information was collected for the FY23 of this year. I will also update you on the, on those programs, victim services grants that were placed on the Sustainability Plan by the Office of the Governor. And lastly, I will provide you information for the FY24 work that has been accomplished through the end of March of this year. There is an answer, question-and-answer slide at the end of the presentation, but at any time during any slide, you have any answers, questions, feedback, comments that you wish to make, please don't hesitate to post me so that I can answer those for you. So we'll get right into it. This slide here shows grant applications that were written during the FY23 period. A total of 63 grant applications were submitted for funding with a total request of $63.4 million. This slide will also show you how many grant applications were submitted for the past three fiscal years. This slide shows you the grants that were awarded for FY23. Of the 63 grant applications that were submitted, 53 were successfully selected for grant funding to the county for a total of $55.8 million. 12 county departments received assistance from this, from this funding. 192 grant-funded personnel were funded with these 53 grant awards, for a total of 13 departments, for a total funding of $13.8 million in grant-funded personnel. 41 of those positions were funded by the American Rescue Plan Act, known as ARPA. We had 41 positions for a total of $3.5 million. As you recall, in FY22, the grants team informed you that there were five victim service applicants that were placed on the Sustainability Plan by the Real Grand Council of Judges, Criminal Justice Committee, in collaboration with the Office of the Governor. Since then, one of those programs was not funded. So currently, we have four programs that are on the Sustainability Plan. So just to give you a little bit of information of what that means of being placed on the Sustainability Plan, the Sustainability Plan is, is reducing the amount of funding every year for those programs by 10%. So that increases the match that these programs require, but it does not increase the match by 10%. The match is increased by the amount of what the programs need to sustain those programs. The Sustainability Plan will end in FY26, and in FY27, those programs will no longer receive funding. So the next four slides that I'm going to show you is data for those four programs that are on the Sustainability Plan, so that you can see the trend of the amount of funding that has been received and the amount of match that is required to sustain these programs. The first one that you will see is the 65th Protective Order Court. The blue graph represents the amount of funding received, and the orange graph represents the match received. And it's for FY22, 23, and 24. Those are actual amounts. And FY24, that amount is included in those grant applications that are currently in review. We did not include FY26 funding because that's an unknown number until FY25 is awarded later, later this year. So this is the Protective Order Court, and then we're going to go next to the County Victim Resources Program, and it's very similar to the 65th Protective Order Court. Next is the Sheriff's Victim, Office Victim Services Grant. And then the final one is the District Attorney Victim Assistance Program. As I mentioned earlier, I was going to provide you with information of what our grants team has worked on during FY24 period up to the end of March of this year. The grants team has submitted 53 grant applications for FY24 for a total amount of $65.4 million with a $16.2 million match requirement. 39 of those grant applications are continuation applications, and 14 are new grant applications. To date, to the end of March, five grants have been awarded in the amount of $4.4 million with a match requirement of $542,800. If there are no questions for me, I will now pass the presentation over to Mr. John Sarah, Director of Budget and Finance.
Thank you. That's very impressive. The percentage, especially of what we have to match against what we get is just very impressive.
Thank you, Judge. We were hoping that that's how you saw it when we made this presentation to you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Vizcano, and thank you to the grants team. I want to point out a few things that, when, you know, were presented in the, in the slides. The first one is, if you notice the trend of the number of applications, you'll notice that in FY23, the total number of applications was 63, 63 grant applications, while until mid-March in FY24, so that's five and a half months, we're already at 53 applications. So we're already getting to the whole year number in half a year. So that's something to point out. And so with that also, I want to point out that when you see the trend going down with the number of applications, it's because in 2021 and 22, we had COVID, and we had a lot of opportunities for grants that the team was applying to. I would say FY23 was more closer to the baseline of pre-COVID numbers and applications. So we're ramping up from there with no additional opportunities, but we're trying to find those opportunities. And it's a very delicate balance that we have to strike with, we would love to apply to all grants that are out there, but at the same time, we have to be mindful of the match amount that the county is required to put in. So we, we want to relieve the general fund rather than strain it further, which is actually exactly what we're going to go through with the next slide. Our challenges, I would say they're not challenges, but opportunities for us to improve. It is that match requirement that we look at when we decide whether a grant should be pursued or not, because obviously speaking, we, again, we don't want to put more pressure on the general fund. So that is an opportunity for us to look at those matches. I would say we also have another challenge with moving grant positions to general fund. We have to factor that in when we apply to grants, because, you know, when the grant basically expires, we need to be sure that we have that contingency in our plan. So those are the challenges that we are facing. The return on investment is also another factor that we take into consideration with all the grants that we look into and then eventually apply for. As for the six...
Do you want to go back one?
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
Just want to comment on the fourth item.
Yes.
Which is always so important for us.
Yes.
To, you know, make sure that we're, that we're aligned with the strategic plan, and connecting them is just so important. And then, of course, the ROI, especially as we're moving forward, so, so very encouraged with that, sort of that vision that you have.
Oh, absolutely. And I can't take credit for that. This team is the team that deserves all the credit for it. They're the ones who look into all these factors when they look at those grants.
Thank you.
And so, you know, all the thanks go, go to them.
Thank you.
So on the successes side, I'm going to say that we, we have an excellent team. As you can see, aside from Ms. Vizcano, who just recently got promoted, the three team members we have are relatively new, so there's a learning curve there, but they are, they are definitely acing it. So that is a success that they got over that learning curve relatively quickly, and they're, they're certainly doing a lot more applications than last year. We are trying to implement a software called OpenGov. We would like to say that it's implemented, but we do have challenges, just like in any software implementation. We're trying to clear those hurdles, and we may be able to use it fully, to its full extent, by either the end of this fiscal year or the end of the calendar year. Obviously, when, when you have different systems trying to talk to one another, you do have some integration issues. Once it is in place, it is transparent, it's effective, it's efficient. We hope that it's going to be a good system overall for the county and for the constituents. And then finally, what I touched on before, which is the number of applications that throughout this year until the mid-year point, we have applied to close to the full year of FY23 in applications. So with that, any questions?
Questions? Yeah, Commissioner Holguin?
Hi, John. Good morning.
Good morning.
Do we have any vacancies in the grant department? I seem to remember we had five positions at one point.
Yes.
Yes, so do we still have a vacancy?
We have an ARPA-funded position, and I think we are in the process of moving our ARPA-funded analyst to the permanent position, and then we want to decide whether we're going to fill back that ARPA position or not.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
So you may have a little bit more help.
But you're absolutely right.
We may get a little bit more help then, to the grants team.
Yes, yes. I mean, we would love to fill that position, but obviously, we have to discuss with county admin, depending on the budget and resources and all of that, to see if that's possible or not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'll stay here for the next item.
Item 9B, receive a presentation regarding the 2024 Budget Register and fiscal year 2025 Budget Impact.
All right. Good morning again.
Good morning.
So just as soon as the presentation, here we are. All right, so this is the FY24 Budget Register and Budget Impact. In February of this year, we came to this court with the first, I guess, the first presentation of this, of this budget register, where basically we wanted to keep track of all the items that could potentially impact our next year. We did make a promise back then that we're coming every month with this, but again, I was hiding for the last few months unsuccessfully, I would say. But here we are with this update. Ms. Garza, who made the presentation in February, did touch on what, what exactly are we tracking, but I'll, I'll just refresh your memory on that. Basically, we look at contract increases, whether it is a new contract or it's an increase related to CPI. We do look at program increases as well. That could be items that are expanding, whether in scope or service. We also look at grant matches, which ties perfectly with our previous presentation. Again, for every, well, I shouldn't say for every grant. We try to look for grants where there are no match required. Those would be perfect for us, but unfortunately, we, we don't get a lot of those. So we have to be mindful of those grant matches. So the last time we came to the board, to the court, sorry, I dated here as February 22nd. Actually, that's when this was put together, but it was February 26 when we came to the court with this exact table. So I wanted to replicate it to make sure that, you know, it ties with what was presented on February 26. As you can see, most of our increase comes from the collective bargaining agreement, which is five, almost $5.3 million out of the $5.6. Since then, since that date, we had very few items. They were all in Marsh, so I want to really thank you for being very mindful of the potential impacts of any, any items we approve here that could negatively hit our FY25 budget, especially with FY25 budget being a little, we're a little more careful with FY25 budget, given all the data that we have right now. So with that, you can see that we have six items collectively, and I think I have the summary here. Collectively, they are only $136,000, and, you know, that's 0.000226 of the tax rate increase that we, we estimate that is needed. But we do have some pending items, and those are being factored into FY25 budget. We don't have the exact amounts on some of them, and on the others, the last, I would say, not the last one, but the one before it, we're not sure what the percentage is going to be and the funding source. So those are factored in, but I want to just bring them to your attention while we try to finalize the details. We expect some revenue loss because of our decline in federal inmate population, daily population. And then with that, we used to get reimbursed for medical and health bills, medical and mental health bills, which is not entirely defined yet on a dollar amount, but we are expecting that drop as well. We do have jail and judicial system operating cost increases due to the overall larger number of inmates in our, in our facilities. And, you know, we can see some of that in the overtime for our sheriff's department. The last two items are the ones I referenced. We have the match with the city for the consolidated rail infrastructure and safety for the consolidated rail infrastructure and safety improvements, Chrissy. Now, that is at $2.1 million, but it's over a two-year period. We're not sure if it's going to be 50-50, 60-40, or 40-60, but we're trying to get that information. And then finally, we have the El Paso Central appraisal district service fees increase for FY '25, which we know for sure it's going to be close to $1.3 million. So that is going to be factored into FY '25 budget. So with that, any questions?
Questions, anybody? John?
And John, I just want to clarify one thing. Back on the previous slide, it's actually not this particular jail medical/mental health to be determined. That's the pending increase from UMC. So we're expecting an increase in our medical/mental health care cost, and that could be as much as $5 million in this coming fiscal year. We're still working out those details, but that's another significant impact.
Thank you for clarifying, Ms. Carr. See, I should have hidden more.
And Betsy, are we still also having discussions with the CAD regarding their increase, or is that amount pretty set?
So that's something that we hoped we could reach out to Commissioner Coronado with your approval. So CAD submitted, and they submit their budget, and they submit it to all the taxing agencies, and it's divvied up. The increase is divvied up amongst all of us. And our increase is that almost $1.3 million. In the past, the court has asked its member on the CAD to go back and see if there was any room to reduce that amount of that increase. It's a significant increase for our portion of the CAD budget.
Do you know what the total amount of their increase was for all entities?
I want to say-- I want to verify. I don't remember.
It's multiple millions. I mean, if our portion was 1.3, then the total must be multiple millions.
Yes, ma'am.
And are they saying that that's all directly related to the new requirement that they have an election? I can't imagine that the cost of the election is that much.
It's the election, and I believe some wage increases. So we can place that item back for-- I know Commissioner Coronado won't be able to be here for a couple weeks. I don't know what their deadline is to implement their budget. But if, or this item isn't submitted for action, but if the court either wants just staff to reach out, I mean, we can reach out to see if there's any ability to reconsider that budget. Normally, it is the board member, the commissioner's court, who is on their board that goes back and reaches out and discusses it with them.
Perhaps we can just ask Commissioner Coronado if he's able to do that and maybe get us a little bit more information about some of the other entities. Like, I'd be interested to know how much the city's portion is increasing and also whether or not they're pushing back on the CAD.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate your presentation. Thank all of you. Thank you for everything you do. Thank you.
Okay, before we go into executive session, we are asking for item 10D. Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071, discuss legal rights and responsibilities regarding litigation style of the United States versus Texas, number 2450149, county attorney's file number 016523PL, along with the corresponding regular session item 11B. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding legal rights and responsibilities regarding litigation style of the United States versus Texas, number 2450149, county attorney's file number 016523PL. Be deleted. Just give me one. We have a motion by Commissioner Ogilvy, by Commissioner Leon. The voting is open. Judge Somenego, are you able to vote? Commissioner's Court will now recess into executive session to discuss items 10A, B, C, E, F, and G, pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071, 551.074, 551.076, and 551.087. Commissioner's Court will reconvene to take official action.
You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it, you'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're gonna meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're gonna get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture. You can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the Historic Mission Trail.
My go, I'm heading back. Welcome, everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are not eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines, and I also get the COVID vaccine, so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit ephealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19.
La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis. Para las vacunas y rutinas de sus hijos, visite ephealth.com.
Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos. Así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacúnate.
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it, you'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're gonna meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're gonna get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture. You can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the Historic Mission Trail.
My go, I'm heading back. Welcome, everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are not eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines, and I also get the COVID vaccine, so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit ephealth.com.
We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19.
La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis. Para las vacunas y rutinas de sus hijos, visite ephealth.com.
Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos. Así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacúnate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are not eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines, and I also get the COVID vaccine, so I and my loved ones can be protected.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are not eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine.
I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com.
We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19.
La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis. Para las vacunas rutinas de sus hijos, visite EPhealth.com.
Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos, así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate.
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it, you'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're gonna meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're gonna get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture, you can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My call, I'm Heringba. Welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19. La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis para las vacunas y rutinas de sus hijos, visite EPhealth.com. Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos, así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate!
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it, you'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're gonna meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're gonna get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture, you can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My go, I'm here in Ba. Welcome everyone.
My go, I'm here in Ba. Welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
It's time to come down and check us out.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19. La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis para las vacunas y rutinas de sus hijos, visite EPhealth.com. Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos, así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate!
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it, you'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're gonna meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're gonna get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture, you can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My go, I'm here in Ba. Welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19. La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis para las vacunas y rutinas de sus hijos, visite EPhealth.com. Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos, así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate!
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it, you'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're gonna meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're gonna get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture, you can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My go, I'm here in Ba. Welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19. La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis para las vacunas y rutinas de sus hijos, visite EPhealth.com. Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos, así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate!
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it, you'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're gonna meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're gonna get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture, you can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My go, I'm here in Ba. Welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19. La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis para las vacunas y rutinas de sus hijos, visite EPhealth.com. Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos, así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate!
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it, you'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're gonna meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're gonna get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture, you can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My go, I'm here in Ba. Welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19. La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis para las vacunas y rutinas de sus hijos, visite EPhealth.com. Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos, así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate!
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it, you'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're gonna meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're gonna get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture, you can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My go, I'm here in Ba. Welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it, you'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're gonna meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're gonna get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture, you can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My go, I'm here in Ba. Welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19. La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis para las vacunas y rutinas de sus hijos, visite EPhealth.com. Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos, así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate!
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it, you'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're gonna meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're gonna get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture, you can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My go, I'm here in Ba. Welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19. La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis para las vacunas y rutinas de sus hijos, visite EPhealth.com.
Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos, así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate!
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it, you'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're gonna meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're gonna get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture, you can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting. The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My co'm herimba, welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19.
La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis para las vacunas y rutinas de sus hijos, visite EPhealth.com.
Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos, así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate!
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it, you'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're gonna meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're gonna get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture, you can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting. The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My co'm herimba, welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
Go ahead.
Commissioners Court has reconvened to regular open session. Item 11A, discuss and take appropriate action regarding litigation in the case regarding El Paso County, Texas, and the State of Texas versus Fiat Chrysler Automobiles &amp; V, County Attorney's Case Number 002417PL.
Judge Commissioners Eric Rosales-Negagliaoni Assistant County Attorney. If the court would like, the proposed motion for this could be, as discussed in executive session, authorize outside counsel to request that the court dismiss this case against Fiat Chrysler Automobiles without prejudice.
We have a motion by Judge Samaniego, second by Commissioner Leon. The voting is open?
Excuse me, sorry, I apologize. Did we, um, give me one second. I don't know if we went back into open. One second.
Will we do it? So we redo the item, correct? Okay, Commissioners Court has reconvened to regular open session. Item number 11A, discuss and take appropriate action regarding litigation in the case regarding El Paso County, Texas, and the State of Texas versus Fiat Chrysler Automobiles &amp; V, County Attorney's Case Number 002417PL.
Judge Commissioners Eric Rosales-Negagliaoni Assistant County Attorney. For the court's consideration, the motion for this item could be, as discussed in executive session, authorize outside counsel to request that the court dismiss this case against Fiat Chrysler Automobiles without prejudice.
We have a motion by Judge Samaniego, second by Commissioner Leon. The voting is open?
I don't know if I seem to be able to vote, but I vote aye.
Commissioner Stout is absent. Motion carries. Item 11C, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the UTEP Aerospace Center as it pertains to the county.
Eric Rosales-Negagliaoni Assistant County Attorney, we're asking for no action on this item at this time.
Item 11D, discuss and take appropriate action to decrease the financial and operational impact to El Paso County as it pertains to law enforcement actions by the state, including arrests along the El Paso border.
Eric Rosales-Negagliaoni Assistant County Attorney, we're also asking for no action on this item at this time.
And this completes all the items on today's agenda, Judge.
Thank you all. Good to see you all. Hope you all had a great Father's Day yesterday.
Likewise.
Y'all take care and be safe.
This concludes today's meeting at 12:43 a.m. Sorry, p.m.